All right. We are going to call our meeting to order. This is a special call meeting, the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Our agenda is basically to discuss the 1% legislation and its proposed use for the development of Cornerstone Tournament and Recreation Park and improvements to existing parks. So, and that was the call of the meeting. So, what I can tell you is as of today, I got a notice from our lobbying group that the bill has passed out of the Senate and is now headed to the Governor's desk. And hopefully, according to all the people who are in the know, it should be signed this week. And from that, we will then be able to determine when we're going to do a referendum, which is going to require us to adopt a resolution. And Mr. Latimer has drafted that for us with the to-be-filled-in for dates and that sort of thing. So, what I would like us to do is take a look at what Mr. Logan has done for us to kind of say where we are in terms of the projects that we have done, the things that we want to look at as the next three years for existing parks, and then look at Cornerstone Park and see out of that what we can afford to do and which direction we want to go. And this is obviously not a definitive meeting. This is one of those that's just to, you know, start thinking about it and talking about it so that we can move forward in a very positive way. So, anybody, has anybody heard anything different? I assume the Governor hadn't signed it yet because I haven't heard anything. Vice Mayor, you're usually in the know. Have you heard whether or not there's actually been a signature anywhere?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Okay, well, we will, we will assume there won't be any hiccups in that since it's been passed to the House and passed through the Senate. So, and hopefully this week we will, we will get that signature and we could either take up that resolution, depending on what happens, we can conceivably take that resolution up on Tuesday and then set a date to it if we get it signed by then. So, and if the Governor doesn't sign it, I know it's 10 days, right? From the time that he receives it, he has 10 days to sign it. So, and I think they all want to get out of, get out of the legislature at the end of this week. So, I'm very hopeful that we will be able to set that up for Tuesday and put that resolution in front of everybody and see where we want to go with that. So, having said that, Mr. Logan has put together, he's got a, he's got a PowerPoint that he sent to Joel and he's got it loaded up there. So, what I would like him to do, if you don't mind, Gary, if you would kind of take us through that. And for once, when you get to the projected stuff, I think there's some opportunity for dialogue there about what we want or don't necessarily want in some of those parks. So, we'll kind of follow along with you. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, is that okay with everybody on the board? Is that a good, good plan? Okay.
And some of this may seem a little bit redundant. We did get, I guess, piece some of this from the work session on the 15th, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm going to hit the highlights and, you know, recap some of...
Just capital projects, right.
Yeah, so we'll spend a lot more time towards the end with the three-year projected. All right, so this is a map from the comprehensive plan so everyone knows we do have the seven total parks and just a note that we don't manage or maintain the fire station park that's leased out to the partnership. So, all right, first off, Sportsplex, a quick note on inventory, just, you know, everybody knows, anybody watching, so yes, got the Travis Outlaw Center, two full-size indoor basketball and indoor walking track, meeting rooms, and two racquetball, seven soccer fields, eight softball fields, and an outdoor pavilion. So, that's the park inventory. And some highlights of improvements that we've made just since, you know, the last few years. You know, the accessibility, which we highlighted not long ago. If you've seen our Facebook, so we've done our best to address some accessibility and plan on doing some more of that. We've added some landscaping behind Cades and KFK Fields. New soccer goals and nets were bought last year, both for local league but also anticipation of the Memorial Cup that's coming this year. Some temporary fencing, pitching screen, portable mounds, and new water fountains. And then inside the Travis Outlaw Center, new floors. If you've been in there, you know it's the, the new floor, l荫ed floor, really nice. We've done some purchase of portable basketball goals, again, league purchase, concessions equipment has been updated, and then the LED lighting on the building exterior. So, that's by no means, you know, there's lots of other slightly smaller things, but just some of the highlights. And what we're currently having the works for the Sportsplex, the field signage and school board panels, which is related back to the field sponsor program. So, you'll see a lot of those going up new, baseball, softball and baseball fields very soon. And then some other drainage improvements that we're currently working on.
And those are, where are those drainage improvements, real quick?
So, we've got the culverts or the drain pipes. We have several inlets within the park, some pipe failures, and we're doing our best to find some, I guess, some long-term improvements for that. Pipes that just keep sucking dirt and causing some issues, liability issues around, so we're working to get those fixed long-term. And then I say drainage improvements, you know, we're, we can have been and continue to do various improvements related to athletic fields, you know, just ongoing maintenance but trying to, you know, do some, do some better fixed stuff, rental of equipment to do some better fixes related to soccer field drainage too, so.
So, is it mostly in the soccer field area?
Yeah, so the, when I put drainage improvements here, it's really related to those, the inlet pipes or the pipe drainage, those are the bigger problem, or bigger fix. The athletic fields is more of an ongoing drainage maintenance issue. Oh, anything there? Can I run through? And just some, some pictures of these. So, you'll see the LED lighting, which is very bright on the far right. And then you'll, the rest on those, you know, the sidewalk, the before and after, soccer nets, that landscaping. And then there in the bottom left is a picture of our temporary fencing with a lot of cars in the background visiting Starville.
That temporary fencing's really pretty nice, too. I was out there the other day.
It made a huge difference. It's a very, very good thing to see when you first walk in, part-time and leaky. McKee, obviously another very, very heavily used park, it's got six total baseball fields, the three playground units, a couple of swings, all that's located within Kiddplex, the musical trail area, you've got the basketball court, four tennis courts, and two outdoor pavilions. Some recent improvements, the roofing at the large pavilion, very, very, you know, a large project was the chain link fence repair for Buffalo Wild Wings at Golden Triangle Bane Center fields, which has been completed. We continue to work on various sidewalk improvements for accessibility. We've gotten some done and have more coming. Gravel landscape timbers to that secondary parking area by Zaxby Field, a batting cage net, tennis backboard, and then grills, water fountains. And then further back, shortly after I started, actually, were some accessible swings that were added to that park. And then rule sign and two new backload printers, those are, those are all relatively recent. And then you'll see the schedule projects, McKee's got a lot in the works of the new backstop netting for those two middle baseball fields, current Buffalo Wild Wings and Bane Center, the new spiral slide, the slide went out recently, we're working on a replacement for that. The reservicing of the basketball court, we're actually trying to do that system-wide, we're just waiting on a second quote so we can resurface our basketball courts throughout the city. And then the new field signage and school board panels related to the field sponsor program. And then you'll see just again, more and more irrigation controls, light timers, more batting cage nets, and a small sandbox area. So, lot in the works from McKee.
When do the, when do the timers on the lights go in?
Just whenever we can get with the vendor over the next couple of weeks. And there you see some, some of the pictures, the accessible swings in the bottom right, and then the roof right there next to that, and tennis backboard. And I did my best to get a before and after on the chain link. It's really hard to really see the improvement unless you physically go out there, though. It's a big improvement for those fields. Jaleel King Park, another very, very large park with a lot of different inventory. That's why this length is so lengthy. The football field, I put baseball softball field because it's primarily uses softball, but we've actually been using it for baseball more recently. We've got a mound out there right now. The walking track, splash pad, the new playground with the musical trail area, little drums. We've got two basketball courts there, the tennis court, what's currently a seven-hole disc golf course, two outdoor pavilions, and then the Jaleel King Center, which is currently being utilized by the school.
Can I ask a disc golf question? Do they not have nine holes?
Well, that was a goal, but for spacing purposes, they ended up being seven.
So typically it would have nine, okay.
Correct, and we have two baskets waiting in the wings.
Okay, it's an ignorance question. I just...
No, not at all, not at all. Typically nine is what you'd like to see, yeah. So, the improvements over there, the new playground was installed last year, new roof on that upper pavilion, the bucket for the splash pad, which was very recent, was running away of that baseball softball field, and actually, you know, continue to work on that and actually going to have some league play out there this, this spring. The disc golf course, the musical trail to that playground area was added, tennis nets, again, continuing maintenance, walking track benches, which is something we again do system-wide, but got some new, new wood for those benches over there. Landscaping around the building, kind of changed that around a little bit, grills, tables, and rule sign, again, things that we've been able to do in several parks. And as far as scheduled goes, again, we're including the Jaleel King Park basketball courts for our resurfacing project, just waiting on the second quote there so we can get those resurfaced. And then working through the logistics of getting the mountain bike trail up there on that property to the east.
And that's, that's an area that's not used at all right now, right?
It's just heavily wooded and hilly and...
No programs.
No program use.
Correct, correct. Undeveloped, undeveloped currently. And then getting some pictures, that's splash, the water buckets up in the top right, and then that nice, beautiful playground with the musical trail in the bottom right, and the disc golf course in the middle. And then the, I did my best standing up on top of a trash can to get a picture of that new roof on that upper pavilion.
Here, I see a workers' comp headed that way.
Mon Creek, another popular park, of course, has our pool and dog park, one new playground, and then an outdoor pavilion.
Vice Mayor, is Mon Creek the oldest park in the city of Starville? Or you may know Alderman Vaughn?
Hold it. I'm...
Or mayor. I was walking my way around the table.
I was going to say, timeout, we're older than, we're...
I use him for, I use him for all my institutional memory. He's good for it.
And it, and it, it was around when we were around, so as far as I know, it's, it's the oldest in, other than we use school park areas. Overstreet, we had a park, has a park kind of area, but yeah. Don't make him as old as...
He's my institutional memory.
All right, quick, the list of improvements over there, the new playground was installed technically in 2018, it was at the very end of 2018. The new dog park employment was installed last fall, new landscaping, which we've done that to multiple areas over there, the new ADA parking pad, which was like last week, 2019, the new driveway to the pavilion, which was on Friday, because I was there, Trent and a couple of our guys were out there doing that Friday, new rule signage, the pool, we did a windscreen project, which is relatively small, but made a big difference over there. The free sunscreen station this past summer was a, was really, really nice and a good hit. Plumbing in the restrooms and then additional seating and shade areas for the pool. And then the scheduled projects, we're working to repurpose the former playground site, the sand volleyball, just because again, aside from, other option was digging three feet down and trying to replace with dirt, but instead we're going to just mull it up and make it sand.
But, but tell why? Why you chose the volleyball?
So, variety of reasons. We definitely had a call for it. We've had, you know, multiple inquiries over the past year or so from an adult group that plays sand volleyball in the community, and they don't, they don't have a place to play other than maybe crashing some of the apartment complexes or sand insurance center. So, we don't have that type of park amenity within our park system yet, so it's a new addition. But the facility market report for that facility, Mon Creek, indicates that I think the median age is around 32, which is right in that sweet spot for the age that we want to meet for the park. So, it's a good chance of taking the opportunity to repurpose something that's there and to, you know, without having to spend a ton of money, and, you know, it's a good fit for what the data we have on the park.
I think the data part's cool, that you kind of do that based on the demographics of the area, so.
Then, you know, scheduled, new picnic tables, benches for the, for the pavilion, just to add some more there, and then plumbing at the pavilion, just some pavilion upgrades over there will be scheduled. George Evans, so off of Lesby Street, it's got the Needmore Community Center and outdoor basketball court, a playground, a gazebo, and then the swings. Done some improvements over there, the new gazebo roof, which was part of that project with Keep Starville Beautiful, really, really cool, great project. Swings are, the swings were replaced, picnic tables, that again was part of that Keep Starville Beautiful project. We've got new kitchen equipment inside the Needmore Community Center. And then scheduled to replace the basketball goals, add landscaping, and also resurface the court over there.
That's a park you don't really see. The building blocks it, and then when you come in from the other direction, you just see the basketball court.
And I included the pictures on this.
It's pretty?
Yep, it is. It, it really is. It's a great, great area to have a picnic, and as you can see from the pictures, the before and after was incredible over there, and that's, and it still looks great. The gazebo, just, it is really a nice park, a well-shaded park, which you don't always get, so. And then the last thing we'll hit on, just, you know, our other two were Patriots and...
Hold on a minute. Oh, sorry.
What about, what about the small park, Josie Park?
That's, that's right here. That's where he's headed.
Yeah.
I think, no, we're still on the same page with Patriots Park, so you kind of doubled them up.
Oh, okay, you doubled them up.
Yes, yes. So, this latter area, we have Patriots and Josie. Again, they're smaller parks, and we have a couple of different classifications based on size, but Patriots and Josie are more than the neighborhood, smaller neighborhood park around. We've put in, you know, updated picnic tables, there is a new chalkboard art station, which we were able to work with a community group on at Patriots. We've done some landscape adjustments over to Josie and then a new bench, but looking forward to adding some more. It's a very, very small park, Josie is, but we are looking forward to doing some, some improvements. We can certainly do something with that.
And at one time it had a community market, or, what am I, sorry, a farm? Yeah, garden, thank you.
We did.
And that's not, it's not effective anymore, right? It's not...
Correct, correct.
Did we take down the fencing and everything that goes with it?
We haven't yet, but the, we had a volunteer group that was managing that for us, and they've really kind of gone away, but we're actually going to restart a community garden at Jaleel King Park. That, that's in the works. So, behind the community center, the school district's actually working through that right now, and we've applied for a grant. That was part of the presentation on the 15th. Still kind of waiting to hear the answer on that. But either way, the school district, MCB State Extension has expressed interest in doing it at Jaleel King Center. So, it may, it may be a slow process, and the school district may lead the way in the beginning, but we are going to have kind of the ability to meet that need through our, through our facilities, just not directly all of us.
Okay, cool. So now we have the three-year projected capital project.
Yes, so this is the, obviously the fun stuff.
It's the fun start, yeah.
Yes, so the fun stuff to talk about for sure, but by all means, stop me and discuss. And again, this is, this is a very, very rough draft written in very light pencil despite it being the, the presentation. So, these are things we, we've, you know, either come out from the comprehensive plan, just our generic research, knowing the needs of the community, the needs to update a lot of the infrastructure in the parks. So, within this first year, and I've got listed on here 10-1-19 as a start date, but really could be potentially sooner on some of these. So, this is really basically now until the end of that fiscal year, which would be September 30th of 2020. So, we'd like to renovate the Mon Creek Park Pavilion. It's certainly old, we've got consistent, you know, constant bathroom issues over there, and this would kind of, one fell swoop, address that. And since we've got a new playground and want to add park amenities over there, a new, a updated bathroom and working pavilion, so we can certainly highlight that as a great rental facility, would be much needed and welcome. Constructing outdoor pickleball courts, we have a pickleball group playing three times a week at the gym, and that seems to only be growing. So, that, that's an option and something we potentially like to go ahead and get on, you know, get in the works. The addition of a restroom at Patriots Park, huge need. You know, that, that's a great small park, but again, we could put a restroom in over there, and we'll propose to do that. Park access and security, I know this is a generic term, but adding some entryway gates to various park areas, adding additional security cameras to monitor our facility specifically, addressing storage areas and fencing those storage areas, specifically behind the Travis Outlaw Center. We've already got a small storage area there, so we'd like to not close off the driveway because that's how you get to the dump, the, the trash, yeah, the trash dump area, but just being able to fence in a small area. So, this really encompasses a lot of different things, but that's why I put it as park access and security. Constructing bathrooms at the Jaleel King Park football field. We already have one football team playing out there during the fall, have a pretty frequent use of the walking track area and number of events that host out at Jaleel King Park, and this would add a restroom to that football field, which currently if you walk in that walking track, you're either going to the splash pad or walking all the way down the pavilion, so it would, it would be a big need.
So I was going to say, that'd give us three, right?
Correct, correct.
And that's a big park, you mean?
It is a big three.
Very, very. It is a very, very large park, and this would, again, this would, this also sets us up for something we'll talk about just a little bit. But again, just bathroom at Jaleel King Park football field would really transform and make, make the, the, I guess, the northern end even more usable than it already is, which is that football field area. So, replace the McKee Park playground. Yes, we had the slide broken recently, and we're doing our best to fix it, but that, that slide breaking is really indicative of a, you know, a bigger issue. It's that playground unit, which is a very, very large playground unit, it's 15-plus years old, so it's, it's certainly due for replacement. It's, it's at the top of the list as far as our current assets of playgrounds. It's really at the top of the list of what needs to be replaced before, you know, certainly adding new is, is definitely an option. But the McKee Park playground is certainly, it's in line to be replaced. What I put on here was proposing to potentially replace it with a wheelchair accessible unit. We don't have that in our park system now. We, most of our playground units or all of our playground units are ADA accessible but not wheelchair accessible. So, if someone on a wheelchair, they can wheel up to the playground, but they have to access the playground through what you call a transfer unit. So, they park their wheelchair and scoot along the playground. So, this would propose and add a wheelchair accessible, so they could physically wheel up on and use the playground.
Okay, so...
Sure, go ahead.
I saw your hand first.
No, go ahead.
Before my mouth opened, go ahead.
Well, the, the big yellow slide, which is broken and has gone away now, I know you're looking at replacing it. Does it make sense to do this at the same time?
Short answers, yes. So, we can replace the playground, excuse me, that slide would be a standalone slide. It wouldn't add a slide back to the current unit. It would be kind of a separate, just a separate feature.
So, so it's not something we would put in and then take out?
Correct. It's not, it would not be within the current footprint of what you said, the larger, and I say replace the McKee playground, I'm talking about really primarily that central largest unit, which is, replacement cost is certainly in this ballpark, especially if you go with a wheelchair accessible unit. Playground equipment, everybody's surprised. We got a number of people that reached out about the McKee slide and wanted to help, and playground equipment is a lot more expensive than you would think it is.
They were surprised, weren't they, when they got that much?
A little different than the $100 slide in your backyard, kind of thing, yeah.
Correct, correct.
My question is going to be, is this the, and I don't have an order of magnitude in terms of size, but I know we bought a really big one, or we were donated a really big one that went into Mon Creek. Is it the same size thing? It just has different features? I mean, is it that big or bigger?
One of the bigger, maybe?
The, the unit is, so a wheelchair accessible playground, so what we would do is work with the company, is part, part of the design process and work to determine if we would go within the current footprint or just move it over. There's, there's lots of space over there. So, we, you know, could move to the north to where there's the walking path already and just open, open green space right now. So, we would just have to evaluate if, if any new unit, wheelchair accessible unit would fit within that current footprint, or if we just need to move it a little bit.
Okay, all right. So you could potentially keep the one you got till it just totally totaled or is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Could, could, yeah. As long as we pass it, as long as we pass it, well, once we host the playground safety inspector course, we'll, we'll see if it passes.
The new one?
Oh, the, the new one's all five?
I'm sorry, the, the one that's there now. Somebody told me there was rust on the chains. That may have been five years ago.
Well, we could probably spray WD-40 on that and clean that up.
And then the last thing under this first year that you see would be the addition of a covered basketball pavilion. We don't have one of these.
I'm pretty geeked about this personally.
Yes, I, I certainly am. If I'm not mistaken, Tupelo has one, but theirs is covered by canvas cover, not a, not a hard, like, metal cover. But we had them in college station, and they were fantastic because it allows you to play basketball in the rain. Very, very heavily used. So, this proposes that we would add a covered basketball pavilion at George Evans Park over the current basketball court. So, it would, it would open up another, you know, people are already playing basketball over there, but again, it would just allow more play. That park, as noted in our facility market report, is, I think the median age of that area was about 22, 23-ish. So, very, very young area within the, you know, the adjoining streets, and we know that there's lots of basketball played over there. This would just open up even more timeframes and even during rain. So, and again, a new feature that we just flat out don't have.
I think that'd be a great thing, so, okay.
Look at one thing before you go further.
Yes, sir.
At, at the two pavilion at, at Jaleel King Park, it's no water fountain near neither one of those pavilion. So, somewhere underlying, we're going to need, we can do that in-house though.
Right, and, yes, and I actually meant to mention that there's, there's a lot of projects, and that would be a, a good example of, because, yeah, we have, we have some other water fountains we have planned to put up over there, is that there's a lot of smaller projects that don't necessarily hit this list on a capital improvement level that we're going to do in-house.
What's a water fountain cost? Because we've replaced it's probably... We replaced some last year, right, as opposed to putting in new ones?
Yeah, and some of the newer, like the concrete, the more heavy-duty ones we have are in the 1 to 2,000 range, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's the minimums in the scheme of things.
We do have a, a few in stock. It's just you have to dig out an area and, you know, connect the water.
Well, connect the water, yeah.
Right, and we do have a couple of scheduled more that we have currently already that were purchased that, that will be installed.
Okay.
Like the Jaleel King Park basketball area, too.
Okay, and that's toward the back there?
Correct, yes.
So, we have, do we have plans for two of those at Jaleel King or one, or...
I'd have to double-check about what we have currently in stock, but we can absolutely order more.
Okay, just, I'm just curious what the plan was. Okay, sorry.
Meant to note that at the beginning, there's, there's lots of other projects that we'll continue to do in-house like that.
Better for maintenance.
And adding a basketball porch was another one that I know gets brought up. That's again, something that could potentially be added without necessarily rising to a capital project, you know. New basketball courts are, it's kind of on the cusp of that 20,000 level, so we might be able to, you know, planning to look at adding more, but not necessarily as a capital project, so.
Okay.
First year, questions? All right, so, second year, Needmore Community Center renovation. Put on here, this, you know, just doing any number of things as far as renovating that building, basically replacing the building, you know, so 150,000 just as a, as a really rough estimate, yeah, for, for that, but it's certainly in need of it. We, we do have some rentals over there, it's used as a voting complex, and it's used as an after-school and summer program. But, you know, depending on what the long-term vision is for that park and that facility is certainly in need of, of a major renovation. The replacing of the Travis Outlaw Center roof, we have minor leaking issues right now, and have been able to patch them without any serious concerns, but that's, again, the plan isn't thought, that's going to have to be addressed for real, so that's where that's in there. The addition of a playground at Josie Park, get a, a small playground unit for that, and again, we're waiting on the facility market report for that facility, but are expecting to get back results. There's, there are certainly families in the area, and then be able to install a new, a new small playground unit there. The city contribution for the Starville High School tennis restrooms, this is more of a discussion item that, you know, in discussion with the high school. They certainly need a restroom at that high, at the tennis facility, and part of our management agreement with the high school about the tennis is to split it between the city, the school, and the tennis association. So, it's kind of a placeholder item as well, but some.
Would it be forty thousand? Would it split three ways?
Approximately.
It's also a bathroom.
Bathroom, meeting room type, yes, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, meeting room.
Well, I mean, excuse me, like a tournament office.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, just being able to have some type of small office there. They don't have any indoor storage either.
Nothing now, they're just.
I just didn't realize it was a meeting room.
Meet up in the pavilion.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. They have the two pavilions there, but yeah, so it's storage and kind of an office tournament desk type thing. Yeah, they, all their stuff is stored outside right now, tennis courts.
Okay.
The J.L. King Park walking track overlay, put that in here.
Does that include a widening of it too, or is that just an overlay?
Yes, we could certainly widen. I think it's ten or twelve now. We could certainly widen it.
Well, I didn't know. Alderman Vaughn, isn't that widening, did I remember that correctly?
Yes, we widened it.
Okay, alright.
Long overdue.
The play unit and infrastructure for Academy Road Park. So, currently, you may, there is not an Academy Road Park. However, we do have access to property that's behind the current, the fire station that's on Academy Road. There's a fire station and utilities property area. So, again, this can be, absolutely be an item of discussion. But, we have nothing southeast, so for, you know, South Montgomery area, and this would seek to meet that need. Develop a green space, put in a play unit, you know, potential pavilion, which is mentioned later. But, just develop, you know, develop that play space.
I'm inclined to move that one to later on because there's some things over here that I think we ought to move.
It helps with our money.
Forward a little bit, yeah.
Sure.
So, and since it's, it's nothing anybody contemplated anyway.
Sure.
You know, it's kind of like.
But, what I will say is, I appreciate that. I think one of the things that, what we've learned from the Fire Station Park is that the city owns a lot of property. And some of it is in very strategic locations. And so, to think about how do we best use that for the long-term good, I think is, so I appreciate you bringing that forward and I think that is definitely a worthy thing to discuss. And I think we have a lot of those little places around where, you know, a little more seating, a little more lighting could go a long way. So, I think, I think, I appreciate the sentiment.
Well, in fact, he's reached out to the Grace Presbyterian Church, did you not? And you responded to, because they've got the big parking lot they just did. And a little bridge going across the creek there would give you, you know, access to it. It just, it's, you know, it's not one of those things that's been really contemplated. We just kind of talked about it, but, yeah.
And that certainly seemed, you know, could seem like a high cost. But, if we utilize that parking lot, we need a small pedestrian bridge and just, you know, it'd be a lot of things that would go into that. Last thing, yes, it's on here, it may not be necessarily on there. This, you know, discussion item and actually wouldn't necessarily be part of the city's capital project is lights for the J.L. King Park football field. Discussing with utility, Starwood Utilities today about how exactly to implement that. But, basically, long story short, we would be able to implement that and really not affect this capital project.
Well, except that I'd like it to be reflected on here because I think it shows that we've got a commitment to that. So, I would like to see it at least, even if it's not part of the funding, if it's a different funding source then, but we could show it as something that we're going to be doing. And I think I'd like us to show that as, that as a future.
Parks will pay for it. It's just going to be paid for over a number of years. And that's what keeps it from falling onto this list in a traditional capacity because we don't have to, we don't have to do all the money at once.
Right, so absolutely should be noted. So, I believe admitting there on, you're actually, you'll see just a little bit about the money per park. But, yeah, just, we were going back and forth on the various iterations of the presentation. But, yeah, just certainly wanted to point that out and note that that is absolutely, you know, part of what we'd like to propose is to light that park. Certainly coming handy, it would open up the football, the football team that's out there using that now. They use it purely daylight hours, but also open up for various other multipurpose uses as well throughout the year.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And in combination with the bathroom we've already talked about, then you've got a very much full-service, you know, multipurpose field.
Yeah, and it could certainly, soccer or CrossFit could serve for any number of different sports, right?
Alright, correct. It's a very, very large field.
Yeah.
Then the third year, skate park is something that we've heard about, certainly get asked about somewhat frequently. It's kind of like playgrounds, folks don't realize just how expensive they can be. And it's a lot of concrete, but you've got the concrete and then, of course, you know, the liability aspect to it. But, again, this is discussion item, the addition of the skate park at the sports place. I also know, I mean, sports place, but McKee, you know, as far as exact location, could depend on a number of things. But, in that area, certainly a good fit, somewhere with parking, somewhere nowhere near a neighborhood, you know, hours and things like that. But, a skate park is certainly that we do get asked about and believe would come, would be a very, very good asset in the park system.
Okay, using your demographics, and I don't mean necessarily location, but who uses? Is that millennials? Is that high schoolers?
Would they drive to a park with the?
Teen, so, yeah, teens, so I would say, yeah, teenage primarily and even some college. But, what we see is teens. So, we'll see the folks that come to the sports place or the one, more often the ones that use the tennis court for that, tennis players and skateboarders tend to be a conflict. But, primarily teenage and young adult.
Okay, I know I just had a, we just had a Facebook post from someone who was talking about somebody skateboarding on Old West Point Road. So, obviously, people are using skateboards in ways that I remember a long time ago using, so. And I do have, have you ever priced a climbing wall? Have you ever looked at a climbing wall for?
I do not know off the top of my head exactly. I just know you have to staff them. That's the only thing.
Right.
Right, yeah, but I do not know what it would take off the top of my head to do one.
Okay, just as a curiosity question, okay.
So, the skate park, again, something we certainly don't have, very welcome addition. What I put in here for the multi-use trail connectivity project, at some point, you know, a very, very good idea for a variety of reasons to address this because, again, from the comprehensive plan, we do not have trails within our current park system. And while we just applied for a grant, I hopefully add some, waiting on the answer there. It's certainly something I think that they go into a capital project to address this. And without necessarily tying this to a specific park, you know, I think one of the main goals of any multi-use trail is connectivity. So, whether that's, you know, again, throwing out ideas, by no means binding, but maybe this is connecting J.L. King Park to Mon Creek to Greenways. Maybe, you know, it could be not necessarily within what you imagine as a park system, just a greenway-type trail.
Oh, that's true.
So, it's just something that I think we really, really need to continue to put in our minds and think about devoting funds to multi-use trail projects, so. And then, last one on this third year is the rentable pavilion at the Academy Road Park. And just adding another pavilion, we haven't had a new rentable pavilion really added. So, if we were to be able to develop that area near South Montgomery, I think adding a pavilion to add as a rental capability would be, would be a very, very good project to do, so.
Okay.
And then, last item on, we just put a note here about unfunded. New pool, you know, we certainly hear about that. But, a new pool is a very, very costly project, so it's certainly a topic of discussion. But, you know, to do a new pool, especially if you want to add competition lanes and make sure that it's proper length to do competitions, you know, high school, college even, you know, type swimming competitions, being able to host swim teams, things like that. But, also making it a zero entry pool, a zero entry pool. Right now, you know, you have to climb down a ladder and we have to, we have an ADA chair. So, if someone comes in, we have to literally lift them down into the pool. It needs to be a zero entry pool, so it's accessible, you know, kiddie play area, things like that. So, a new pool facility, it's certainly something that is a worthy discussion, but it's very, very costly.
And this is not even an auditorium because that jacks it up another half a million or better. So, you're just talking about an outdoor pool that is larger.
If we, if we tried to do a new version of what we have now, I mean, this is, this isn't even, you know, one point five is probably really not even that nice.
Low ball?
And not even that large. It's similar to what we have now, just to update it, make sure, you know, updating the pool house, you know, make sure we have good plumbing, good restrooms, things like that, good changing areas to make it kind of a modern-type outdoor pool. But, yeah, it's just, it is very costly, so that's really what that's about.
And it also costs a lot of ongoing expenses, light guards and.
I think the boys and girls got, they got an indoor pool in their project.
They're talking about doing it, yeah, I would, I would sure advise against it. Only because it is such incredibly expensive and high-maintenance kind of, kind of project. And we just, we just closed that one at J.L. King because it wasn't being used, so, I don't know. And maybe with the Boys and Girls Club there would.
Yeah, you had about a, you had about a five hundred and five dollar leak that you couldn't, you wouldn't have been able to afford to fix it. Plus the liability.
Well, and it may be that that might very well be something that they can afford to do. And that'd be great if we could get that in because that'd be in addition to it, so. Okay, so, from, from, well, I guess you got another page, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to take this to be able to summarize. And please note, you know, the, on Mon Creek, that four hundred and twenty, that was originally what was in there for the pool. So, that's actual accurate number is just thirty for Mon Creek. But, the placeholder at the end being for, unfunded for the pool project. But, everything else, just kind of note what, what it would look like, you know, for all of our parks, all the different areas, what that would look like. So, I wanted to get a good visual of where it would be spread.
All over town.
Yep, every, correct, correct, so.
Okay, so is there anything, and I'm asking Alderman this, is there anything that you guys see that's missing from what we want to do with our current parks before we go into the, into our dream project? Is there anything, anything that we didn't?
Water fountain.
Okay, well, we'll make note of those.
ADA sidewalk bathroom, you know, at the other pavilion on the hill up there, there's no, there's no ADA. But, you already talked about that. That's something that we will try to go and out. We already talked about the water fountain.
I'd just say, and I'm sorry, I'll wait till you're done, Alderman.
And Splash Band had another, no, two more phases go to it. I don't know when we want to do that.
I don't know, but what kind, what are the other phases?
Two more phases go to it.
Really?
Yeah.
Haven't heard that, but.
I'm not going to set up with three phases.
Huh, okay. Do you have, do you have those plans somewhere?
I don't.
Hmm, okay.
It was Cuvion, that's who did it.
Okay, alright, well, let me, let me make myself enough to get in touch. Neil, Cuvion or Jeff, okay, Neil?
Wonderful, you know, that's who did it.
That's your bucket, correct.
Okay, alright, well, let me see if I can get up with him and see what the, see what the phases are.
Yeah, had not heard that.
Me neither.
Two more phases.
Yeah, okay. Did that include the bucket thing or is that just a gimme?
It's everywhere that there was.
Yeah, okay.
Two more years out there, we plan to put something there.
Alright.
And again, like, there's, and there was a number of other things that, you know, we're working to do in-house and some. I'd love to see, and we're currently working on now, about replacing system-wide benches, picnic tables, things like that. But, we have some other plans for that and going to try to meet that need in other ways before it becomes necessarily a capital improvement project. But, just a lot of other things that may not necessarily make that list that we're constantly working on. And we'll add to the, if I did this presentation in a month, it'll probably look even more, you know, significantly different. Just continuously update the running project list, so.
Okay, alright.
And I'd like to say about McKee, the things that I see a need for in terms of people using the parks in different ways, they probably need another basketball court there too. And then, a dog park, that's an area where there are a lot of apartments and residential areas that don't have access to green space. And so, and dog parks should be pretty cheap.
Well, we don't have one on the south side either, so that'd be kind of a balance there.
I'll agree with the dog park in McKee. I think, I think, I think people have an image of a dog park and they know of the one that we go to here. And that's certainly applicable to a place like McKee. I think George Evans and Fire Station Park are more applicable to an urban-style dog run. And there's zero doubt in my mind, if you did the demographic data there, half the people over there have a dog.
What's a dog run? Educate me, please.
It's going to be smaller than a typical dog park.
Crossgate has, Crossgate, if I'm not mistaken, Crossgate has one.
I haven't been there. I'll go check it out. But, it's going to be a substantan area, usually separates small and large dogs. And is a place to be able to unleash them while there are other things going on in the park. So, I would say in your urbanizing areas and places, you see more and more of those.
Compact is what.
It's compact, it's compact. And is, you know, desperately in need and would drastically improve the conditions around our neighborhoods where people are walking their dogs currently.
Okay, well, one of the things that I know Gary, Gary and I have chatted about some is the Needmore Center being in such rough shape. It would be nice to just take it down and put something else in its place that would be, I think it would be nicer. And it also gives you a visual to the park area that you don't currently have now because you really can't see all the stuff behind it at this point. You don't, you don't really know what's there.
Yeah, I don't want to get off in the weeds on that, but I have a lot of thoughts about the Needmore Center in George Evans Park. And I think there, I think it is clearly a facility that means a whole lot to a lot of people. But, I do believe that the actual building itself is in desperate need of lots of attention.
Oh, I was talking about.
But, I do agree is that the area changes over there. One of the things that keeps people from using that park is it doesn't have very high visibility. And so, finding a way to open that up from the Gillespie Side Street into, to be able to see the park would allow people to use it much more, so.
Does the building itself have, have some, it doesn't have any historic character, does it? The, the metal building doesn't have any, does it? I mean, I don't, from a neighborhood's perspective, or they got a fondness for that building? And I'm asking seriously because I just don't.
I'm not aware of any historical perspective, but like the gentleman from Forsyth said, that park has a lot of sentimental value and meaning to a lot of people in the area. But, any way that I think it can be significantly improved within a cost-effective way, that would be very meaningful. But, I'm not aware of any historical perspective.
I just didn't know, you know, that building doesn't strike me as generating a whole lot of warmth from the, from the neighborhood, as opposed to the park, which certainly would, so, okay.
Let me say one thing, very interesting, you got involved in discussion. That, just want to take this back in a little time. Of course, we have a lot of great parks, but I just want to share this with my colleagues here, the Patriots Park. We worked and said, voted in the past very diligently with some very fervent community involvement. That property for historical purposes here this evening was owned by JB Rains, who was a frequent attendee at our board meeting, said those meetings were never none interesting. And we had a lot of comments about the use of that property and the acquisition of that property. And the then board many terms ago was able to acquire that property at a very reasonable price because there were two properties, JB Rains Junkyard, he had the defense company. So, we bought both of those properties at a very reasonable price. And, and the board back then was very careful in his deliberations about the particularly use and scope of that park as to what should be the use of the park and what type of presence should be there given the location of it. So, good to see some investment there, possibly pass there and the former junkyard owner, you know, would come to the board. So, we always had plenty to hear. And, but we endured and, you know, that has a lot of history, those two old people passed by there. I see that and have given what it used to look like. Those who never had the opportunity to see the location, it used to be just full of junk cars and other.
Well, that's the, I'm so glad you said that because the reality is, I remember that very well because, because I actually, my father owned the other piece of that, if you recall. And y'all straightened out the road. And JB would drive through town with a truck and a loudspeaker. And he would, he would call everybody out. I mean, he called me out, he called my father out, he called the city attorney out. It was just, it was a fascinating time, so I do remember that as a junkyard very well. It's amusing to me. That's why I'm smiling like a Cheshire Cat at you about that.
And in closing, it's amazing how the intersection location looks now versus how it may have used to.
Absolutely. I appreciate you bringing that up because it makes me smile. It was, it was an interesting time. I would hear about it from long distance, I have to say, but I can remember the lawsuits and all that with it, so.
I think he died with a lawsuit, didn't he?
Absolutely.
I think he died with a lawsuit, didn't he, probably?
Yeah, probably more than one. Yes.
And I do want to note, since there were multiple iterations, I'll make sure and email everyone out just the latest and greatest just to make sure, I'm saying clear on.
Okay, well, and if you would, when you're, when you're redoing it, let's, let's change it a bit to reflect the water fountain. Let's put some water fountains in there just so that they're noted. And whatever, it was something else that we, that we talked about a little bit, just to add there. Oh, the lights for the, for the J.L. King, show them in there as well, even though they may come from a different source.
Sure.
As an improvement, so, cool. Okay, so that's kind of where we are and where we want to go with current parks. And then, we have, you have the binder in front of you that's the 2018 master plan for Cornerstone. So, what we want to see is what can we afford to do? And this is, this is kind of the wishlist. I mean, the color is, is obviously beautiful. It's been on our website. So, the goal is to, or my, my sense of it, what I would like to see us do is afford as much as we can with as high quality as we can. And while the master plan was developed with an idea of perhaps thirteen, I think thirteen or fifteen fields, I believe that's going to be beyond our pocketbook to start with, so.
May also be beyond our needs.
Well, and it may very well be, it may very well be. But, obviously, the goal of this is to not only be a recreation facility, but to be an economic development driver for us as we bring people into, into town for tournaments. And Alderman Walker is particularly well-versed in tournaments because you go. I mean, you, you get up and leave town and we'd love for you to stay in town, right, with, with all the kids.
Love to be able to do that.
That would come in. And there's lots of people around town who feel that same way and we hear from them. So, from, from my perspective, what I'm hoping that we can do is basically have a, have a good look at what the potential is and where we want to go and see what we can afford to do. Ms. Sistrunk has, in her inimitable fashion, done some financial accounting. Did you pass on?
Terribly exciting stuff here, but, but this is, this is the part that should help you get comfortable with what you decide you want to do next. So, that, this first sheet, this first sheet is just sources and uses of funds for the, for the parks. And we, we have some cash on hand right now. The two percent money adds to that every, every year. And then, the one percent that's waiting for the governor's signature and assuming that it passes an election here in town will generate new money. What's a little different about that one percent money is that it stays with the city for parks. It's not split with other, other organizations, so that's.
In its entirety, yeah, parks only, as well as that one percent for hotel, which we heretofore had not had access to. So, that hotel and the, and the food and beverages included in that same legislation. And so, we would get the entire amount. Now, hotel is going to be roughly. Now hotel is going to be roughly, what, a hundred thousand a year or so?
Hundred fifteen, hundred and fifty, depends on.
Well, obviously, we have every expectation that it will grow, as we, as we are successful with a tournament facility, which clearly is jobs and assets and, you know, additional ad valorem based on that. Mr., we had a, if y'all recall, a while ago, we had a hotel that was looking at going on the west side of town, that did not end up pulling the trigger on that, but I think he would be very interested in coming back if we have some major activity going on on the west side of town. So all of that hopefully will build, but I think Ms. Sistrunk has done it at a flat rate, so that we aren't having any expectations that we can't then meet.
Absolutely, and, and so those are our sources for these capital-type projects. We'll obviously still fund our park system with general funds, and, and that's an annual negotiation, but this, this money is restricted for improvements and, and capital projects. So that, that's where our money would come from. We budgeted this year about $300,000 for parks upgrades. We have some debt service, which is a little lower this year related to the Sportsplex. This year it's a little lower because of the refinancing. You'll see it ticks back up in 2020, and then there are a couple of loans that are being paid out of that fund. So if you add up your sources and subtract your uses, you, you get a balance, and I have just rolled that forward each year at a flat rate. In 2020, I have added, I have added some, most of the things that you've talked about for the 20 fiscal year, 20 capital improvements. Some of those actually could be pushed into this year, because the, the cash is on hand, so bathrooms, those kind of things, I'd say we could actually get started with this year. I've added in costs associated with the new park. There'll be some startup costs, and that's a placeholder number, but it's, it's within the realm of reasonable, based on what we've heard from other places that have done parks. The first-year debt service, I'm assuming, will be an interest-only, six-month kind of payment, and then we anticipate that we will probably have an outside agency managing this park, so starting to build in those, those operations fees, assuming that the park would probably open October-ish of next year, so about 18 months from now. And then rolling those numbers forward, in 2021, there's full debt service in there and a full year of operations. What we see in other places is that as they, as they ramp up, they actually get the operations cost, the management cost, down to zero. So I, I think that we can expect that to happen here in Starble as well. That million four would, would give us about $21 million a year, well, a year, I wish a year.
Hello.
With our $3 billion fund, we'd be in, we'd be in business. It would give us about $21 million, which would be used for Cornerstone and for repurposing some of McKee and some of the, converting the Sportsplex to more soccer complex, multipurpose vehicles. So the Sportsplex, the other thing that would probably be important to note, is that that debt pays off in 2027, so this, this gets us well into the next board term, still having enough money at the end of the year that, that they'll be able to make their Sportsplex payment, and, and that's really, the question is, or do we want to go forward with this? I think we can afford a good bid with, with that borrowing. Now, the, the question becomes if, if the public agrees with us and wants to vote yes on the referendum for the, for the 1%, but I think it's manageable. I think it would be something we need to monitor, obviously, and I don't think it leaves the next board in a bad position. I think it, it positions them to be able to carry this forward. I budgeted everything flat. If we saw the annual, if we saw the annual increases in food and beverage and hotel that, that we would expect from inflation over historical averages, we would probably pick up another, another $60,000 a year, so, so that would just continue to grow. If we see increased tournaments, these numbers should go up, as we have more people in town staying in hotels and eating out, but none of that is built in here, so this is, this is what I'd call pretty conservative.
I'd say very conservative, because every year we've had some measure of, of growth, so.
Three, three to seven percent.
Yeah, so to hold it absolutely flat, I think is very conservative.
And this page I'm just giving you, because this kind of dates back to last fall, when I was talking with the person from Government Consultants, who helps us a lot with this, and he was assuming a million two in revenue that's available, I think we'll have a little more revenue available than that, and then showing us what we could borrow at 20, 25, and 30 years, assuming a four and a half percent interest rate, which is again conservative, and that's just informational, if you want it.
Alderman Walker, I thought, yeah, Alderman Sistrunk, just, all right, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear, on the annual debt service for the Sportsplex, that is paid off in 2027.
It does.
And what is the, it looks like, so the fee goes, you know, from 404 to 430 and back down to 424, so those remaining four years, is it around that same 400?
Four and a quarter, four, four and a quarter, somewhere in there.
Okay. Well, I'll say that I, I think we've, I think the thing that is proven over and over is that while the park in and of itself will take time and may not in and of itself make money, what it's going to do is generate money for the city via increased sales tax and people staying in hotels. And I think no better place than we see that, is this is a mini-version of what funds the, the bulk of our city right now, is that the events that happen at Mississippi State, whether it's baseball and basketball and football and bringing people in, this is the same thing, just on a much smaller scale.
More consistent.
But more consistent. And that's one of the things where I think it really has the opportunity for more weekends throughout the year, of being able to consistently build, and if we do it well, and if we, $21 million or $18 million, it is a lot of money, there is no question, but at the end of the day, you're only going to be able to get so much for that money. And I would rather have fewer fields of higher quality that meet all of our needs for the recreation 100%, and then still provide a, a great venue for being able to host and bring in tournaments. I think we have the ability to do that. I think that this master plan gets us a long way down that road, depending on who ultimately is the manager and the operator of this facility, very likely has some say-so on how that does, and I'm, I'm willing to be flexible in terms of what this, but I think what this general plan gives us is a roadmap for how we can see this property build out over time, and I think that, I think that's exciting. I think it gives us a lot of room for, for growth, and even more room, opportunity for parks, just community park space on the west side of town. The good news is, our community's going to grow, and it's going to grow, and I do believe that this could help be a spark for increased development on that side of town, which I think would be very good, especially, I think, a hotel and some more retail would very likely show up for this.
I don't think that's even a pipe dream, I think that really is going to be one.
No, I think, I don't think it is either, I think that'll, I think that'll happen. I think it comes down to us making sure that if we're going to do it, that we got to do it right, and that we got to, and that we have to, in order for this to happen, the citizens are going to have to vote, and they're going to have to come out and, and vote and say that we think this is a good idea. And I think part of that is, I think they're going to have to be convinced that we can run it, that we can manage it, and we can operate it, and that we've got the funds in place to, to market it and do that, and I think this begins to show that, that we have that. I particularly like that upfront cost of 600 and the annual operations of 62 in that first year, I think the numbers in years two and three are going to be closer to that number, than, than they are going down quickly. And I would, I would like to see if, if we plan for that and can handle that, then I think we're going to be off, off to, off to running, because the places that we've looked at, we were talking.
Well, and go ahead and talk about those, because we haven't, we haven't really mentioned the, the prototype kind of thing that we're looking at.
So we've looked at a couple of different places where groups are looking at a facility as a for-profit facility, where they're in, it would, they would essentially be a lease from the city. We visited a place in Vicksburg, they have a brand-new park, Sports Force Park on the Mississippi. They have combination soccer and baseball softball fields, a little bit different than what we're proposing here, but this group leased from the city, the city pays an annual fee over the first four or five years while they're ramping up and to hopefully make the park profitable, and the city pays them X number of dollars for the recreation league, and, but other than that, they are in control, they have, they, all the people that they hire are their people, they do all the marketing, they do all the operations, they're in, for all intents and purposes, they own the park, in terms of the operations and bringing in tournaments.
And talk about their business model.
That's their business model.
Yeah, but I mean, that it, it kind of, they feed one another.
Yeah, and so they, these are folks that have places in different locations, so they have Vicksburg, they have Florida, they have Ohio, there are other people out there that do the same thing, and so the part that, the part that gives me some assurances, is that they have contacts with all the right people. They're bringing in people to Vicksburg that come down from Ohio, because they know the quality of the experience that they're expecting to get, and so I think that's, I think that's something that, from a marketing standpoint, if we're trying to convince the people, the restaurateurs and the hotel owners, that yes, you have the potential for, your food's going to go up a, a little bit, are we going to actually market and get something in return? I feel confident that having a group that, that is what they do and they know how to do that, that gives me more confidence and takes some of the burden off of us, quite frankly, or whoever's going to be sitting in our chairs, to say that it's up to us to go make this happen. Still, obviously, involved, and we're going to be there, but having the operations and the marketing, I think, is just a huge, huge piece, and if we, if the citizens vote and however we choose to go, I, I'll be fervent in saying that we have to make sure that we have a professional group in some capacity that is in charge of the operations and the management of the facility. And this has nothing to do, if we wanted the staff up to do it on ourselves, we're talking, you know, at least 10 or 12 new full-time employees, and not to mention all the, the other seasonal employees, and so that number that you're talking about is equivalent to what we would be looking to pay these people for the first few years.
And the, and the people that we're talking about hire, they have on-staff eight to 10 full-time, and then they hire in the summer, it was like 80 to 100?
Yeah.
Part-time as the, as the tournaments were there, so it's a, it's a jobs creator for one, and, and it's a permanent jobs creator for, you know, eight to 10 folks on a regular, on a regular basis, and Mayor Flags in Vicksburg, they put that, put that together, and, and this is the first one in Mississippi, and, and it's, it's managed that way, because the city of Oxford manages theirs, so it's a different, it's a different model.
I think both models work, and I think however, however, if we choose to go this route, we just got to find a way that we know that we have to, in order for it to work, the, the biggest concern that I've heard from citizens, all have been very excited about the potential for this, but the one hesitation has always been, are we going to maintain it and are we going to be able to operate it? I think that's a very fair question, and so I think we have to make sure and be able to show in here that yes, we, we have a plan for being able to do that, and for me, I would, I think, it, I think there's some merit in looking at what the opportunities are for an outside group, that that's their business, that's what they do, to see what they could, what they could offer us.
Yeah. Chris, are you still there?
I am.
Oh, hello, okay. And the reason I call him Chris is because there's an RFP that we saw that Vicksburg put out, that I asked Chris to take a look at, just as a way for us to see what they did and how they laid it out, and so that would be something that we would do if we wanted to move forward with having someone else, we don't, we don't, if we don't get a bid, or we don't get a, any interest, or we don't like what we got, then we wouldn't have to, but there's an RFP opportunity out there for us to, to see how someone would potentially run our facility, so.
And this, these financials projections are based a lot on that Vicksburg model and on their contracts, so their, their numbers, they start out with a fee of $250,000 the first year, and by year five, they're supposed to go to zero. They, their contract guarantees, has some benchmarks for tournaments and participants that they're expecting, and then they do, did have a, an upfront startup cost that helps with getting the, the facility ready to op and, open. I looked at their website, at their website, and they have tournaments scheduled out through, I think, August, and there's a week off here and there, but for the most part, they've got somebody in there every, every weekend, and a lot, a lot of them are from out of state, so.
Yeah, and I would say one of those things where I've been monitoring that, too, just to, because I'm curious to see if there are new players into the market, and I would say it looks like they're picking up some momentum, a lot of, there's some other places that are having more teams at their tournaments thus far, but it's also one of those things where when teams go once, then, you know, I fully expect that they're going to, they're going to gain some momentum, so I'm definitely watching that, to see how that might, would translate for us, or if it, or if it would. But in the interactions that I had when we went down there, professional group that knows what they're doing, and they're in it to try to, to, to turn profit on their end, and they, they're going to get out and hustle to try to get people to come to the park, and so I think that's ultimately what we want, is we want people to be in town and enjoy themselves and have a good time, and have a first-class facility for all of the kids that grow up in the city and want to go play softball or baseball, a first-class place for them, and based on what I saw down there, that we're, we're going to be able to deliver on that. I have no doubt that we're going to be able to deliver on a first-class place for, for kids to be able to play ball, so.
It was pretty. In fact, when we go down, I know Vice Mayor, you're not going to MML, but apparently Gulfport has a really nice facility as well. I know Alderman Little had said that they have a, a really nice facility, and I was hoping he might help us arrange a, a tour of Gulfport when we, when we go down and take a look at it. Have you been to that one?
I have not, I have not been to that one.
I know, years ago, when my son played Dizzy Dean baseball, see, that was Mill Valley, I mean, Mill Valley, Tennessee, where they, you ever been there?
Yep.
They got all those.
Nice.
Where they had something like, what, I don't know how many fields there, I forgot back then, that's when Marlin were playing, Marlin 47, now, but this one, because they won at Dizzy Dean, where I said, he's there yet. I mean, people's from every state it was.
Yeah.
I mean, watching a game play at the same time.
I think it's great.
I think it was something like about 17, 18 fields.
Yeah.
A lot.
A lot, yeah, and, and that's where I think for, for us, I don't know what the number of, of fields are, that makes sense, I, I think, I think eight's a minimum number, I think you got to have, I think you got to have eight.
To hold a full tournament as well.
I think you got to have eight, and I think if we could get to that nine or 10, that would be even better, and I think the, as much flexibility as we can build in, in terms of size of fields, and portable fencing and all that, I think we got to find a balance there, that, something that makes this uniquely Starble and uniquely ours, and I think, I think we have an opportunity to do that. I think the master plan for this gives us a roadmap to be able to do that, which I think is exciting.
Well, and talk, since you're on role there, talk about the, the, sort of the theme.
Well, what, what's been presented in the master plan, I think, is, is good, I think it pays homage to baseball great Cool Papa Bell from right here in Starble, that I personally enjoy reading about all of that, and, and I think, you know, we, we certain, there's a, the only marker that I'm aware of is that there's a marker in McKee Park, that when you go there, that's certainly nice and gives a, gives a good history, and there's a, there's a, a, a uniform and a headshot in the, the Heritage Museum, but beyond that, I think that's, that's the only thing that I'm aware of in Starble, and I think there's, there's an opportunity for us to, to celebrate that gentleman just a little bit more, and, and all he's meant for the community and, and baseball. And so I think, building on that, and the, the long history of baseball here, and with all the folks that come through our state, and not just Mississippi State, but players, I think we have a lot of opportunity to really think about how we can capitalize on, on that, and I think you see it right, right now, with the, the significant additions and changes that they made at, at Duty Noble Field, and the number of people that are coming out there already compared to some of the other SEC schools that draw really well, I think we have a market that we can, people, people want to come here, and they want to come here to watch baseball, and so I think, I think people will come, sort of, don't want to sound like, don't want to sound like Kevin Costner in Field of Dreams, but I think if you build this, I think they'll come, and I think it'll take a little time to, to get going, it's not going to be overnight, you're not going to draw hundreds of teams, but I think we will come, we got the market for it, we got the capacity to do it, we're a place that people are going to want to be, so I think that's good, if we do it right, and I think. And I think we got to be diligent, we got to make sure we're watching our money, we got to make sure we're watching what the people are proposing, and make sure that that's going to give us something that we want. And if we do that, we can have a very, very successful place. And while I believe that Joe Maxx and that group is going to be successful in getting industrial development out at the new industrial park, there's no, we don't know, there's no guaranteed timeline for when somebody's going to come in, and when they do, it's going to be big. But what I, I see this as, this is incremental economic development. It is substantial money upfront for, by our standards, but a big chunk of it is going to be, that we're not, we're not taxing people in terms of property tax, which I think is a great way to do it. And we're, all those people that are in town for the weekend right now, watching ballgames, they're buying cokes and burgers and everything else, and that's what's helping fund this. And I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a good mechanism for us to do it. If we're going to make it happen, this is the only way to, to be able to make a project like this happen, I think, for, for us, to be able to do that. So I don't know, I think, I think now's the, the time is, is right, if we're going to do it. I think, once the governor gets a signature, I'd like to figure us out a way if an RFP is the next step in that proposal, and figuring out what it is we need to do, and try to go market it and convince people that this is going to be a quality thing, and it's going to make Starville better.
I'm doing handstands, hand springs.
Yeah, and if you do, and I think it does, I really do think it has the capability of being able to do that. And I will say too, that, you know, I, I do travel ball, my kid plays ball, but, you know, we're two months out, my kid's probably not going to get to play in this park, and that's okay. But that's okay, I, you know, I'd like for us to, I'd love for him to be able to play in this park. And if it, if we make it that far, then great, but this is going to be for all, everybody that's coming up behind them, to give them a first-class place to play, and really be something that would be great for our community in my mind.
I think it'd be awesome, I'm excited.
Is that like, I'd never get you to play at Starville?
That's right, that's right, that's right. So you got to think about what this is going to be for.
Yeah, it's for the future, no question about it.
This is economic, this is economic development, and if you do it right, it has a chance to, to really do that, to drive, drive development on that west side of town and bring folks here.
And, and you made two or three good points, and I'll try hard to remember what, what I wanted to say. I agree wholeheartedly. One was the idea of having an outside management group. We could do it in-house, they do it at FNC in Oxford, but the ramp-up period, the learning curve with the marketing, all that sort of thing, really, it really delays the success of this. Another, another important point that you made was that, let's build, if we do this, let's build something that is top-notch, that we can maintain and plan for the future. There, there would be an opportunity for growth as, as that growth is, as there's a demand for that growth. So I think, I think that's important. And when we talk about borrowing, it's not just that, that we need to borrow funds for, we will also be investing money significantly back over at the Sportsplex, taking those, some of those baseball fields out, softball fields would stay, but taking some of those baseball fields out and converting that to a soccer complex, multipurpose fields. I think you work with some of those youth football teams and know how much of a demand there is for multipurpose green space outside. And then over at McKee, that, that will be a little more expensive and probably would involve a turf field over there as well, soccer field over there as well. Over at McKee, baseball fields would come out, but, but it would be repurposed in a different way and wouldn't require as much of an investment. But a part of that, a part of that borrowing does reflect having to make some changes, or wanting to make some changes at those other two fields.
Well, I think we take, take the baseball fields out, and I think, Gary, you, you had said that just like sodding those, that area for just, you know, open fielding would be fairly inexpensive, just to sod that area, you know, put grass, just put grass on it, so. Nothing, de minimis, de minimis again, as we're, as we're looking at this. But I really do, I mean, I'm, I'm really excited, because I think, I can see that, that quad, the, the two fours, we have eight, and then the championship field would be an amazing thing to do, I just think it'd be way cool, so. I'm pretty excited about it. And what I'm, what I'm hoping is that we will take a look at, and Vice Mayor, we have, well, I say Vice Mayor, but I only do that because it's a contract. This is, this is the contract that Vicksburg had with those folks, so I was going to say I will forward that to you, but I'll certainly forward it to everybody, I just know that from a contract standpoint, it would be something that you're more entitled, more interested in than, than most of us, so.
Please forward it to them.
Of course, yes. So anyway, we have, we have that, we have the RFP, which is again, a sample that I'll forward to folks too, that was the Vicksburg, sort of the sample that we, that we use to look at, so. We, and what I would like to see is just to have a quick discussion, because come Tuesday night, I'm assuming the governor's going to sign this week, and that we can put it on, on the board meeting to have that resolution go forward with an election. So the, you know, from, from my perspective, I'm thinking, I'm thinking June, and I'm thinking June because, you know, it gives you like two months for us to hold an election, say, on the second Tuesday, so we aren't fighting our board meeting, the second Tuesday in June, which I think is the ninth, is that right, Lisa? Did we look at that date? I think it was.
I was just saying that.
Okay, well, anyway, second, second Tuesday in June would keep us out of our board meeting, and give us about two months to meet, one month to meet the 21-day requirement, and then to have the opportunity to get out there and talk to the public so that everybody's aware and can make a, can make a decision. So does that, chew on it, does that, but that's kind of what I was thinking, and if you have any other thoughts, please, please speak up.
And Mayor, the voting will be done by the voting machine at all locations.
Forever.
You have my support.
And so the advanced work will be done to coordinate with all the interested parties, including the candidates, so here they will co-sign that legislation also, which Mr. Lattab will get done, requires publication at least three times, and it has certain time periods that have to comply with them, certain things that he has already gathered together in the resolution that he's going to have forward. And I read the bill.
Yeah, it's very specific in that bill, isn't it?
The only difference is just the, is the percentage that's required for passage, but I read it, you know, the, the entire bill that was holding.
It'll be 60%, and, and that's, that's the only way that the, that the legislature would be comfortable with us moving forward with it. So, you know, it'll, it'll take that, but I think that if we can, if we can share with our community the impact that this would have, the opportunity for jobs, the opportunity for recreation, the opportunity for quality of life, that hopefully they will see that the same way, and we will, we will be able to move forward.
Alderman Walker, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Did they, did they ever say what, the bottom line figure for, you know, they manage it, we, all of it, and then they manage it? Anybody got a bottom line figure of what they charge, what they fee will for managing it?
Well.
Because if so, really, if it belonged to us, the only thing we do, we just lease it to them to manage it.
It's still ours. I mean, when I said they own, they don't own it, they, they lease it, but.
But still, what is the figure for them if we decide to let somebody manage it for, what is the figure?
Management for year one in this contract, and I hope I'm pulling the right page, because it says management year one.
But it may be different for us.
Yes, obviously, but for Vicksburg, management for year one was $225,000, year two was 200, year three was 200, year four was 225, and the fifth year thereafter, it was zero.
Because they're expecting to be at a.
Yeah, because they're expecting to be.
They'll have, they'll have registration fees, they'll have revenues from sponsorships, they'll have concessions.
Right.
They, they.
Sound better, let somebody, let somebody.
It does, it does.
A turnkey operation.
And so that's what I'm saying, it sounds better, and that's where we need other people to really look at that contract and figure out, to make sure that we're, that we're doing our due diligence.
And if things don't work out, we have an option.
This is a 20-year, this is a 20-year contract, obviously you always have an opt-out of some kind, but this is a 20-year contract. And actually, actually, it's a 10-year contract with a renewal, because those bonds for Vicksburg, I think, were also 10 years, as ours are. So they've got a 10-year contract with a renewal up to 20 years. So it all kind of ties in with what they're doing. But, but we can take a look at that as, as how we want to go forward, but I think Jason's absolutely correct, that, you know, this is one of those things that they can, they're already ramped up. And what they're doing and selling, and if you go on the Sportsforce website, and they're not the only ones doing it, but I think there are two. What's the other name of the one, Mr. Logan?
Sports facility management is another, and that's, they're by no means the only two, there's lots of options, but sports facility management is one I'm very committed to.
Putting out that, putting out that RFP, I think Vicksburg actually only had one who came in with that, and that was Sportsforce. But anyway, we can, we can take a look and see, but putting out an RFP, and I think the resolution is the next step, to be quite honest, and then the RFP from there and the contract, we'll, you know, everybody can look at that and bless it one way or the other, but I think it's, it's a matter of, we determine what we can afford and that we want to move forward, and we can come back and massage the parks to be what we need them to be and how we want to go forward with those. So is there something else about any of this that creates questions or discussion points before we kind of roll out of here?
I'd like to just say that, that I know that with this board, one of our big commitments was to parks, streets and parks. And I think we're seeing, starting to see what's happening with the parks and, and that commitment. I think the capital project plan that you have there is going to be something that the community can see, and can see that we, we, we're going to make this a priority, and we can, we can do it.
We got to make sure we fix these streets for them, though.
We're working on streets, we're working on streets too.
Working on streets too, absolutely.
Some of these drains, and then we, well, we keep digging up, digging into asphalt soon, we put it down, we digging into it, trying to fix some of these pipes, we get some of that, and, you know, maybe they will buy into it, if we, if we can do what our party.
But you need to be proud, because that's the other thing we've done with Pleasant Acres, I mean, that's a very proactive way to, to deal with that infrastructure, and I think that that's, we're going to do that all over town, and that's, you know, that's our future, and that's making that difference.
You got to, you're going to have to do it all over town. I got a couple areas in my town, been dug in five times.
I know, me too, me too.
He know, he know in order for us to, and, and one of them is coming up on overlay, and so in order for the overlay, they got to clean it, they got to.
Well, maybe we fix that section underneath it, before we ever get that overlay, and that's a planning, that's a planning thing, but I really think this board ought to be very proud of what, what y'all have been able to move forward with, because it, you know, these are, these are incredible improvements to what we're doing. These are economic development improvements, your basic quality of life, infrastructure improvements, and, and I just think this is an extraordinary opportunity for us, you know, these windows and these doors don't open very often.
No.
And we're, we're taking advantage of it, and I'm, I just think it's great, so.
And if anybody asks, and y'all all know, but just if anybody asks, these monies can only be used for parks.
Right. That's absolutely correct.
And just one thing, hey, on this, on the budget share, the legislation is very specific. We have to have a separate fund, as we audit it by the Certified Public Account, we'll get those funds on the 15th day of the month, all the day that the month's collected, and we'll get all the money, less 3% that the voluntary retain for the administration collection of funds.
It's, it's like our 2%.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and we, and we know how to treat that stuff, because we've been doing it for 20 years, so, you know, we're, we're in good shape, and I think that's another thing that we have that others don't necessarily have, is some history of having, having managed those things, so.
What's your ideal, how many fields, eight to 10?
I think, I think eight to 10 is ideally where we, where we're going to.
Where we start.
I think that's where you start, in terms of the money.
When you start, and you're going to add some more as you go.
And then you could always add, add more, but I, I think in my mind, I'm thinking eight to 10 is probably where the money's going to end up being when it's all said and done.
Well, let's, let's talk about that just for a second, because we're talking turf in fields, right, and, and grass outfields, right, for the eight fields?
Uh, well, I think the, I think there's.
Have we figured we could?
I think the potential is, I think, I think they're looking for all synthetic, and so we'll have to see what the cost is going to be for all synthetic field versus all synthetic infield and outfield, and we'll have to look at, to see what the difference between the, the costs are.
Well, I was hoping, I mean, the championship field, which is, I, still, I think that's a huge selling point, be all, you know, all, all turf, but, you know.
Championship field, yeah.
Wouldn't that be awesome? The championship field's just going to be awesome.
I think, you know, and that was one of the discussion points with, when we went